Okay, will all the unruly firemen and police officers... You ready? Thank you. Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. I'm not used to having so many people here. What did you do? The... If the city clerk would call the roll.
Councilmember, agency director, authority member Molly...
Present.
Mann. Underwood Jacobs...
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris...
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris...
Here.
We have a quorum.
Motion, excuse me, Mann.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, the pledge of allegiance. Well, no, let's start with the invocation. It will be Chaplain Wade Little from the Los Angeles County Fire Department. Where's Henry Hearns? Henry, the Fire Department chaplain didn't show.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm always ready to pray.
I know that.
Well, Father, we're here and we thank you for this privilege to be here. We thank you for the season of the year that this represents. And we remember the words of one of your servants, Martin Luther King, who said, "Hate cannot drive out hate; only love could do that." Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that. Tonight, as we viewed the lighting of the tree, it represented to me, and hopefully to others, that it represented the light of the world, lighting up a dark world to no light. Thank you for our council members. Thank you for our mayor. Thank you for the staff of this city. And I thank you for all that the city represents, represent the goodness and the kindness and reaching out to those who are not able to reach for themselves, not excusing or passing over the poor, but reaching to them. And we thank you so much for the long standing of our city who does that. Bless us now and bless this meeting tonight. We pray this in the blessed name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless you.
Rod, you want to do the pledge?
Absolutely. Please put right hand over your heart and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some presentations. Okay, we should give an award to whoever the scheduling person was that put all the awards on one night. The first presentation is the sheriff will be giving, along with the... Who's from the city is gonna... Even from the city, to all the volunteers, and there's just a portion of them, and all of the people that got involved and embraced your family, I guess is the best way to say it. When I, you know, we've all learned a lot about Sergeant Owens, but we're still learning. Look at this, you know, it's... I've never seen this city start to coalesce like it is now. It's, you know, why it takes something like that to... But nonetheless, he has to be up there just as proud as he could be that his impact caused this to happen. And if we keep it going, you know, if we continue to recognize that we're in this together, that how well we live, the well-being of each and every one of our neighborhoods is a partnership with all of us. Wow, what we're going to create. And, you know, without Steve, it wouldn't have happened, right? I think we all know that and will forever be indebted. And wait till you see what we do at the park. And with that, I'd like the sheriff to come up, and I'd like you to come up while we give out the awards. And who's gonna help?
Eric, Sergeant.
Okay, great.
Okay, just, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on what we're about to do. On October 5th, 2016, it marks one of the darkest days in Lancaster station history. While responding to a burglary and progress call, Sergeant Steve Owen was brutally murdered by a gang member. Steve was a father, a husband, a coach, a mentor, and a genuine hero. The terrible events of that day were followed by a tremendous outpouring of love and support from our community, the likes of which I have never experienced in my 33 years of service. We are here today to honor those who first came to the aid of Steve, his family, as well as his Lancaster station family. First, the hospital staff, who valiantly attempted to save Steve despite his mortal wounds. For literally hours, their caring and compassion was outstanding. Their generosity and compassion were tremendous in the hours that followed Steve's passing, and we cannot thank them enough. The boosters, the employee organizations, the city of Lancaster, all provided aid in the form of sustenance and emotional support for the station and Steve's family. We are also here to commend and honor those personnel from our sister agencies, the LAPD and CHP, who immediately redirected their resources to ensure that Steve's loved ones could be there to say goodbye, and who later on that terrible night, along with those we honor from the Fire Department and the coroner's office, helped to make Steve's trip to Los Angeles fitting of the hero he was. Although sometimes words are inadequate, I personally, and on behalf of Lancaster Station, want to express our heartfelt appreciation for all that you've done. And now, introduce the sheriff, Jim McDonnell.
Thank you, Pat. Well, thank you. Between the mayor and Captain Nelson, summarized a lot of what my thoughts and feelings are, but to be able to be here with you tonight to look around this room and see people who represent a variety of organizations all coming together with the community that's here as one. And I've never seen that come together so quickly, so well, and something that I couldn't have been more proud of. And I know that I speak not only for the LA County Sheriff's Department, the LAPD, the LA County Fire Department, the CHP, but to be able to see that, and in light of what we've been through over the past several years across America with the murders of police officers, with the police community relations strained, and with the media portraying things in the way that they have been portrayed, it's been a very difficult period for all of us in the profession and those of us in our communities across America. But all of a sudden, things had seemed turned. This tragedy brought some positive light onto the job that's being done on behalf of everyone each and every day through Sergeant Steve Owen. And so, if we can take some light, some brightness, out of some very dark times, I think this is a shining example of what can be done when everybody comes together for one cause, when everybody comes together in a way that you want to invite everybody to look at what's been done, to look at how this was taken to a level that few ever gets to see. And so, as we move forward, we do so on the great foundation that you have created here for us in Lancaster. Lancaster was the center of the police world for a period of time where everybody was looking here for the way forward, and you showed them the way forward. And we thank you very, very much for that. God bless you.
And to start that off, can I get the members of the Los Angeles County Fire Department to come up, please? So, Fire Station 24. Sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, Fire Station 24. Fire Station 33s. Fire Station 130. Fire Station 134. Battalion Chief Patrick Wohaley, on his behalf, Battalion Chief Trent Aronson. Thank you. Can I get the members of the California Highway Patrol, please? That's it. Thank you for the help. Better slope. On behalf of California Highway Patrol Southern Division, Assistant Chief Gregory Peck. On behalf of the New Hall Area Office, Captain Ed Kersey. On behalf of the Altadena Area Office, Captain Ed, I'm sorry, Steve Stroll. On behalf of the Antelope Valley Area Office, Jesse Ogine. Can I get the members of Los Angeles Police Department, please? Los Angeles Police Department Air Support Division and Sergeant George Gonzalez. Police Officer Jason Chappell. Police Officer John Izzo. Los Angeles County Coroner Investigator, Robert Fiero. Professional Peace Officers Association President Brian Moraguchi. Association of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs, Unit Representative Dana Facker. Can I get the members of the Antelope Valley Hospital up here, please? Dr. Larry Stock. Nurse Heather Farrell. Nurse Chatrelle Pittsford. Nurse Fabiola Suno. Nurse Moni Garcia. Dr. Eric Shalard. Nurse Jeremiah Johns. Nurse Mary Walker. Nurse Rita Thomas. Nurse Courtney Derryberry. Nurse Juliette S. Wine. Forensic Nurse Bridget Amice. Respiratory Therapist Jeanette Brandon. Emergency Room Technician Chad Burry. Emergency Technician Ripsumay Artunian. Emergency Room Technician Matt Dowsey. Thank you very much. Can I get the staff here and then can we get one picture together? From the City of Lancaster, Vice Mayor Marv Crisp. City Manager for the City of Lancaster, Mark Bazigian. And for the City of Lancaster Director of Public Safety, Lee Derico. And the last one, if I can get all the members of the Antelope Valley Boosters to come up front, please. Antelope Valley Boosters.
Okay, we've had two requests, Sandra Orzoko and Damian Martin to... And some more. Let's start with those two, to give a gift to the... Mark, you can help them.
Good evening, City Council Members. My name is Sandra Rivera Orzoko. I'm actually a southeast political activist. I was just awarded Democrat Woman of the Year, Assembly District 63. And I'm the family of the Sheriff's Department from the East LA Station. I have been following the story on our beloved fallen Sergeant Steve Owens. I don't know why he's touched my heart so deeply. When I went into your website, Mayor, by the way, good evening, Council Members, city staff, audience, dignitaries, and the sheriffs from Lancaster. I have been following the story, and I've seen you on tape. And I'm very well-connected with Owens, being that when he walked into a room, I understand, he was the light. He was the light of the party, to my understanding. My name is also, they call me Sunshine. And when I enter a room, I'm the sunshine of people's lives. I have compassion to help people. I look for good government, good governance. And also, I'm trying to think, that he also was raised with godly values. I was raised a Baptist. I'm a woman of God. I'm a Christian. So I really, I applaud, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. But I made it a point that I had three cards of condolences from the East LA Station. Captain Perez oversees that department. We have the sheriffs. We have the CHP signing the cards of condolences. We also have Downey PD. We have CHP. We have Vernon PD and Southgate PD. It was something that I dearly wanted to be here. Took us, we got here on time. Thanks for my attorney, Damian Martin, that was so gracious to bring me here tonight. This will not be the last time I come to visit your city, but I'm everywhere. I'm in the city of Cudahy, I'm in the city of Maywood, I'm in the city of Vernon, I'm in the city of Linwood, I'm in the city of Compton, I'm in the city of Downey. And I just went to the City Council meeting in LA, Board of Supervisor, and of course, the City Council, Los Angeles. I don't know if you speak Spanish. We are always in prayer for our law enforcement officers, because they risk their lives to protect us. I am so honored to be the family of the East LA Station. I'm so fortunate to have met Jim Jeff as the leader for the Sheriff's Department. He knows me very well. And I'm the voice for the people, and I'm a voice for those who suffer from multiple sclerosis. So please, support the MS community, and I thank you so much.
Go ahead and take whatever time you need for that.
Thank you.
Sandra, and I can't read it. Another card, who wanted to make a presentation from Maywood. Oh, we got it all? Wonderful. Okay. Wow. That's a lot of people. Wow. Why don't we go ahead and take a break? So, because we've got a whole group behind you, and, well, for obvious reasons, let's take five minutes, and then we'll resume the council meeting after that, okay? And again, Sheriff, thank you for coming. We ready? Let's resume. Next on the list is the Desert Christian High School Cross Country Team. They are the 2016 State of California CIF Division 5 and CIF Southern Section Division 5 Champions. Think about that. They beat out schools with 10 times the money, 10 times everything, and, well, how do you say they kick their... Well, they got there quicker than the other guy. And we're proud of you. I can't tell you how much we look forward to champions coming out of Lancaster, because we know what this city is. The rest of the world doesn't. But the champions that come out of it reaffirm our faith in it. Thank you. So, let's give you your awards. So, let's give you your awards. Since I did so well, and the other one, Rod, why don't you come up? You give them to them. I'll read.
Thank you. Thank you, Marissa.
You know, these guys, they run by my house. And every day I see them. I say a little prayer for them. I mean, how you guys can do that even one day? I mean, it's Lancaster. It's hot. And then, they're full-time students, and every one of them are excelling. The story of the Cross Country Team at Desert Christian is they get the school going, you know? They get the old YMCA, and they start this Christian school. And they ran out of money. There wasn't any money for anything else, but they needed a sport. So they're trying to figure out, well, we could raise the money for basketball. No, can't do that. Raise the money for, no, can't do that. And I think it was George Runner who said, "We could run." And that's how the champion Cross Country Team was born. It was born out of necessity. Congratulations. You're the culmination. So, I would, let's start with the certificates, and then we'll go with the other, okay? Do you want to do that? Joseph Beal? You want to read their names? Come over here and do the, do the names.
Nicholas Pochman. Joseph DeWorff. Justin. How do you say it?
Even Hack.
Even Hack. Oh, wow. I don't. Chris Gonzalez. There you go.
Chris Gonzalez. Get in the picture. Loubert? Quebec?
It's all my trainees.
Andrew Mitchell. Tyler Chilwell. Chicken.
Last but least, Coach Andy Wasaki.
Now, none of this would be complete if you didn't have something to put in the case. You don't get to take this home. It's for the ball.
I got you.
Mayor Perez, have him explain his patches. What all these patches mean.
Look at this, Jeff. Look at this. You got one too, right? Look at this. You're a champion.
I'm impressed.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Comes down. Maurice Santana Dominguez. Yeah, but I want to read. Now, this is my favorite project, and you are responsible in many ways, right?
Project is separate from the employee.
Project is separate from the employee? Then you, you explain this to me. But. Roundabout, that's my favorite project for the last five years. You're going to see those everywhere, but that's the first one.
That's absolutely true. If we can have the team from, that's here from Public Works, I think I saw Marissa here, please come up, those involved in the roundabout. City of Lancaster, under the leadership of our council and giving them direction of "Do your best work, and we won't micromanage you," has happened to win two regional awards. One was Project of the Year, Public Works Project of the Year for the Avenue L and Challenger Roundabout. Please give Marissa, representing the staff, a big hand.
Did you hear that, Marvin? A roundabout won.
You know, wait a minute. I, I want to tell you about what they did. Everybody's opposed to the roundabouts because they're new, and they're difficult, you've got to figure out how to drive them, but once you do, once you do, traffic fatalities drop, injury accidents drop, but more importantly, what occurs is, is the studies show that the stress level of the people in the city drops because of that stop and go, and it's not there anymore. It's a continuous flow. They really are, the reason they're all over Europe is because they work. And you guys had to fight the opposition, you know, people, I mean, I couldn't believe the opposition to it. And we finally got one, and then they put great art on it. So, guess what? We're going to see a lot more of them. Thank you.
And Marissa in particular had to fight the battles and deal with property owners, and I really, and even internally, had to be an advocate, so thank you, Marissa. We were also honored for the fourth year in a row for the Public Works Employee of the Year, which is Maria Santana Dominguez. Please give her a hand. Marissa Maria, we could have planned that a bit better. Maria has been with us 27 years. She started when she was 10 years old, as you can see. She is a leader in our team. She is smart, and she's a hard worker. She takes on the toughest jobs, she trains other people, she's also in charge of our court referral program, and the beauty of what Maria does is she sees the good in people that are there, and will get them, "Hey, since you're here, why don't we try to see what you got," and stuff, and I think she's even had one that turned into a full-time employee under your tutelage. She's also, right now, she's on, she's been on a lot of our crews, she's on the Parkway Crew, where making sure that alleyways and such are clean, but the good thing about Maria is that she's smart, too. She took Jeff and I out, she showed us what she did, I think she took us to a really crummy alley to show us that, and she took us to the dump, she showed us how to lift a couch up and throw it in the trailer, so I tried and could not lift it up, and then she told us that if she had a newer trailer, she'd be able to do a little bit more, and voila, two weeks later, she has a new trailer to her job. One of our favorite people in the city of Lancaster. Please give Maria a big hand.
I think that's it. That's it. Okay, Mr. City Manager, it says, presenter, Antelope Valley Ballet. Can you help me out here? The Nutcracker Ballet presentation presented by the Antelope Valley Ballet, and if... Start dancing, Rex.
Thank you so much. The Antelope Valley Ballet is a nonprofit arts organization based here in Lancaster. We're in residence over at Dance Magic, and we just completed our production of The Nutcracker. We work with dancers who are age five through adult, beginner through professional, and we just wanted to share some of the holiday spirit with you today with just a short excerpt from The Nutcracker. This is danced by two dancers who are 14 years of age, Luke Mosher and Sarah Montez.
Is Lancaster a great city or what? Wow. Okay, let's get started with the meeting. Hour and a half? So was an hour and a half. I had fun. Sorry about you. Okay, let's, we're removing CC 11 from the, from the consent calendar?
That is correct.
Are you removing NB2? Are you removing NB2?
Sir, we would ask that CC 11 be postponed until the next meeting, and we apologize for any inconvenience it may have caused.
And what about NB2? We're taking that off?
That would be, I don't know if you want to mention that now?
Yeah, I want to take it off until January 10th, but there's some community members that wanted to meet.
That's CC 11 and NB2.
That's right. All right, great. Okay, NB1, staff report, any speaker cards?
Good evening, Chair Perez, Vice Chair Krist, and agency members. We come to you tonight with a recommendation to adopt Resolution SA 916, which would authorize the issuance and sale of successor agency tax allocation refunding bonds and approve the forms on file with the city clerk's office. We look to the, to refund the 2003 and 2009 housing bonds to reduce the successor agency's obligations. This refunding could potentially save the successor agency up to $1 million per year in debt service payments over 23 years remaining on the life of the original bonds without extending the life of the new bonds. This would enable the successor agency to pay off their obligations sooner, which in turn would free up funds to come back to the city and the local taxing agencies much quicker. Some of the agencies that would benefit besides the city would be the school district, cemetery district, abatement district, any of the taxing entities within the city. This is a very exciting and good thing for the city and the local community. We do have Marshall Lynn, who is the city's longtime financial analyst, and he is with Urban Futures. This unfortunately is Marshall's last bond issue that he'll be working with us on as he is retiring at the end of this year, but I wanted to thank him for making the drive out and coming to support our effort to save the successor agency and funds on their long-term obligations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? None. None? Thank you.
Thank you.
One speaker card, Maria Pezzano.
Hi there. No, you haven't seen me in a while. I'm able to come up here, I get stopped at the door. I get stopped at the door every time I come up here until I can't come in, so, you know, but I have my dog most of the time, too.
Well, it might be that.
Well, I have a certificate for my dog. There shouldn't be any reason why my dog couldn't come in. Anyway, and, you know, it was a great thing tonight to see everybody come in for Sergeant Owen, for what happened with him. It would be great if that many amount of people can come up every time something happens to someone, or someone dies, or someone, you know, gets hurt, because as far as what's going on with this refunding of bonds, people die every day when they lose their homes, their jobs, their families, their children, things like that. This is from the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency for all location of refunding bonds. And these bonds that were in trust of people that paid them, thinking that they were going to be going for the schools and things like that, and all these facilities and things that they're building, but what they actually did was is take away from people's homes. And this is about insurance, I believe. A lot of it's about insurance and sales of these bonds so that they can't be used for other things like that they're supposed to be used for. Are the people that, are the people whose bond, who's paid into these bonds going to be getting paid back? Any of the money from losing their homes from it, or losing their jobs from it, or losing their, who's actually getting the money for this?
Mark?
These are refunding bonds.
To who, though?
The bonds are refunded at a lower rate, similar to how you would, I'm trying to answer your question, similar to how you might refinance a house. You refinance, taking market conditions, having a cheaper rate, saving the taxpayers millions of dollars in repayment. millions of dollars in repayment.
What if you didn't refinance your house? What if you've been paying on your house, or your house was paid? Who gets the refunding on those bonds that you put the money in for?
Maria, we're not here to have a debate. We're here to hear what you had to say. You had a question.
We are here to have a debate. I mean, on what exactly, because it says here...
No, really, we're not.
Look, it says, "and authorizing certain other actions." What does that mean?
The other actions would be executing the appropriate documents with regard to the refunding documents and making sure that all of the appropriate documentation is prepared, notarized, and filed appropriately in accordance with SEC regulations.
Okay, well, I'd like to say that most of these documents and stuff, some of them have been fraudulently changed or done through insurance, housing, fake certificates, medical, things like that certificates. I think there's billions of money owed to people who's lost their homes or have lost their, a lot of things that they've lost because of this. And I've seen this over and over again, like with the school. They all get the, they get the refunds. We get, if we're teaching or whatever, we get audited, and we end up having to pay money instead of, and losing our jobs and stuff instead of...
Thank you.
Getting the refund.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution SA 09-16.
Second that. Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Oh, passes.
No speaker cards in the minutes?
Praise God. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, M1.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, unanimous. Consent calendar?
We have speaker cards for all the items.
Same person?
One of them with C1 through C13, and then we have C13 on three different people.
What's C13? Okay, let's take C13 out of order and start with that one. And then we'll go back to the remainder. So, you got that just on C13? We have Patrick Sauter. It's a great day.
Yeah.
Why aren't you smiling?
I am smiling.
Oh, good.
Been a smile a lot tonight. Good evening, and happy holidays to you all.
And to you.
I'm Patrick Sauter, 40-year resident of Lancaster. I'm a rocket scientist, retired from Northrop Grumman, Advanced Technology Development Director, and retired Colonel in the Air Force. So, the last time I briefed the city council was 26 April in support of my appeal to deny a one-year extension of Royal Investors Track Map 60291 for development of 20.32 acres adjacent to the prime desert woodland. My goal was to bring community awareness of the woodland and my 10-year effort to prevent development.
You should have called me.
What?
You should have called me.
Yeah, well, you weren't here then. The council approved the extension, and approved the extension, and the planning commission and city council approved all the extensions of, in the city I would expect them to do. However, in this case, the mayor and the council directed and charged the residents to create a community group to provide funding to acquire the property, and we took that direction. And under the Antelope Valley Audubon Society, formed a working group that sent letters and conducted briefings to Michael Anton, Mr. Antonovich and Ms. Barger, and to the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy. We formed partnerships with other local conservancy groups to solicit funding for the land acquisition. I commend the city for providing coordination and support for our community involvement. I commend Ms. Toy Chisholm for providing outstanding support for our effort. She provided us clear and consistent directions on our approach to getting funding for working with the city and the county. As a result of the community effort, on 15 November, the LA County Board of Supervisors approved a grant to the city for $750,000 for the prime desert woodland expansion project. I appeal the council to approve Resolution 16-54 and accept the 750K grant from the county and agree to comply with the assurances that are required by accepting this grant. And I'm sure your attorney has looked at those. The Antelope Valley Audubon Society will continue to provide support for getting additional funding, if you need it, as required for the 20-acre acquisition. Moreover, the society will continue to support management and operation of the preserve and the expansion of the 20 acres. We are preparing a memorandum of understanding that we will sign with you to formalize our support. Thank you once again. Happy holidays, and I hope this will be the last time I will be here regarding Track Map 60291. Thank you.
Don Gichelle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I thank you for giving me a couple moments to speak my piece. I'm going to speak from my heart, and, because this is very, very dear to me. If we look back in history, going back to 1889, this valley used to be overrun with the antelope proghorn. Now there are none. And why is that? Because us, we, the people, were not cognizant of the situation. We didn't take care of our antelope. There's 29 in the Tahoe Conservancy now, and that is it. So, it's, the reason that we, that's dear to me, to the prime woodland preserve, is that we should be cognizant of the situation there. And losing that property, we will lose the habitat. Habitat is not like people. People we can build together, we can live together, and even get closer. Wildlife can't do that. They don't do that. If we keep encroaching on their, on their wildlands, they leave us. And when they leave us, what are we going to do? How are we going to teach our children to, to can preserve and look out for the wildlife? How are we going to teach our children to preserve our country and our lands? So it's important that we, the Lancaster, set an example for the country, preserve that, the 20.6 acres. And I'm saying that with my heart, not for any monetary value, but I think it's very, very, very important that we educate our children, and I cannot think of a better place to do it, to teach and be, and preserve that land. It's extremely important, and I beg of you to do everything humanly possible to come up with the additional funding to preserve it. And I pledge the Antelope Valley Audubon Society's service to you. Anything that we can do, we'll do. I promise you, we'll do it. Thank you.
Sharon Miller?
Good evening. I am Sharon Mellon. I'm a retired school administrator, teacher, grandma, and an advocate for kids now and in the future. You have an opportunity to give generations a wonderful, wonderful gift. That is a pristine, beautiful habitat. I plead with you to do that for the kids of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. No. You want to do this separately? No, we're fine. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent calendar as currently comprised?
No, 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 no. Just, oh, just 13 is the consent calendar?
No, they asked you if you wanted to do it separately.
Yeah, that's what we do, we're doing. What I want to do is 13 and then go back.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar, CC 13, adopt Resolution 16-54.
I'll second.
Let's vote. Unanimous. You know, there's a story to this. This is a really big deal, you know? And there's a great story, because last time you were here and you left, I'm thinking, you know, I'm always writing these checks, I can't cash. And for whatever reason, I called Denise Latanzi, and I said, "You need to get involved in this, you know how to do this, you know, what can we do?" She calls me three days later, "Okay, I got the money." Isn't that really what happened? The, from the county? And it was just, she knew where to look, she knew who to ask, and then it started rolling, right? And I just couldn't let you leave without, wow, that was...
Can I say something really quickly?
No, you don't have a card.
You brought up my name, so I'm coming up.
I can't, there's, there's a lot of people, Toy, thank you so much. She's an amazing asset to the city, so thank you. I appreciate everything that you did. But Catherine Bargeurs, I can't even stress enough how many times she took my phone call, because you can't let it go once you've got them. And I happen to be president of Legum Voters, and I was doing a debate, so I thought, okay, that'll get me in the door. And then she just let me hammer her time and time again, and I really appreciate that. But really, if you look back, I got to say that Patrick, starting this 10 years ago, and staying with it through all these years, he brought something to our attention that me, as a resident, actually live in this neighborhood. It really gave me a lot of passion for sticking there, because who does this kind of stuff for 10 years and puts themselves on the line? So I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate all the support that city staff gave, all the support that the county gave. But I also wanted to acknowledge that Patrick was doing this for 10 years when nobody was paying attention, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Patrick. This is a huge win. It's a huge win for everybody. It's, you know, where's Jeff Little? He was, you know, he was a little unreasonable, but that's okay. I mean, we got it done. All right. Thank you. What do we got next?
I'll move, we accept the rest of the consent calendar as currently comprised.
No, no, no. Let her speak on those. Said you were going to let her speak. No, no, I was going to, this one. Maria?
So, I suppose I get three minutes to speak on everything, right?
We have a Antelope Valley Audubon meeting right now with owl expert in the preserve, so we're leaving.
Okay.
Speaking of the preserve, yeah, the one that was tore down over here, owls were living there.
Thank you. You know, I'm giving my...
You know, I am really tired of coming up here like this. It does no good, other than I'm really upset.
Hey, hey, who's the bear here, you or me?
Look, everyone here is to be charged with crimes. I mean, crimes against humanity, crimes against, I mean, what's going on here is ridiculous. The consent calendar is full of it, okay? I mean, people here are dying every day.
Maria, it's Christmas, can't you...
Oh, yeah, it's such a happy time, I know. You know how many homeless people there are out there, living on the streets, freezing to death? You know how many kids are messed up from all these youth programs and things that they're doing to them? Getting them to, oh, it's okay to do this, sex trafficking, human trafficking? It's out of control here. That's why they don't want CC 11 on here. Nobody wants to hear about that. You want to hear what's going on with CC 11? I could tell you. It's a sex trafficking deal. There's all kinds of things. Let me talk on each thing that's going on here. With the red lights flashing, and the ethernet, you know, gassing the girls, and all kinds of things.
It's a street light.
We couldn't even talk about that. You know, you come in and try and talk about what's going on at these motels and stuff? Nobody wants to hear. You can't go in and say anything. They won't even take a police report on it. But, oh, I see in the front page of the paper, it talks about, oh, the Texans are checking out the sex trafficking and all this. Baloney. No, they're not. They're allowing it to happen with all these business licenses, predator licenses. They can go in and do whatever they want to people. Girls, people that they've taken, you know, to prisons, or people, all these little youth camps, they got the kids in and stuff. And it's a fact, and I don't care. Anybody wants to sit up here and say, "I'm crazy," I'm not. It's what's going on.
Well, Maria, I'm not sure about that one.
Oh, I'm sure of it. And what else we got here? I mean, that's, you know, that's why I said, that's why they removed that one, I'm sure. Regulatory schemes, oh, yeah. Oh, and then we have all the codes, too, the electrical codes, mechanical codes, residential and building codes. Why do we have so many more accidents in this town? Another 18,000 more accidents than usual in this town because of what's being done with the electrical? I've seen them zapping people, okay? You know, they have these, they roll in all the mentors, they come in and talk to them, they come out zapping people in the prisons and stuff, or they're back here, counseling, they call it, I guess. They're running off the road, people hitting trees, and people, and those are, it's all about insurance. Insurance, they cover that, it's a nice, neat little package. You got insurance, you got the, you know, the medical that, you know, takes care of that, then you have like the cars and stuff, too. They're all involved in it. I see the buses, they have the main things on there. Come out, and they have the little devices, you know, that can blow up your cars or whatever, run them off, your tire blows up, you run off the road. They're killing people. You should be, for crimes against humanity, genocide. And now we have the, you know, I mean, I could just, oh, I'm so mad. I am so sick of this. I'm sick of watching my friends, my, of course I'm going to get arrested. How many times have I went through this? I should be able to speak, shouldn't I be able to speak? Can I speak? Or are you telling me that I can't speak? It's my right to speak. See?
Really?
I'll move, we accept that consent calendar is currently comprised.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Now, we got to get back up, right? Right? It's Christmas time. We can't let somebody drop us down like that. Okay. NB 1. Any speaker cards?
We just got one.
Just got one. Okay.
Mayor Paris, Mayor, allow me to start over. Mayor Paris and city council members, we are here to talk to you today about recently passed Proposition 64.
I'm sorry, should we take this one off, too, and have them both done together at the next meeting?
That is certainly a prerogative, no problem.
Yeah, let's do that, so we don't have to do it over again.
Okay. Thank you.
So NB 1 and 2 are moved to the next meeting. NB 3, do we have a speaker card?
No speaker cards.
Let's waive the presentation.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 16-56.
I'll second.
All in favor? Right. It's unanimous. Okay. CA 1, any speaker cards?
None.
All right, I'm nominating Drew Mercy to the vacant seat on the planning commission. Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
No, I think...
Mr. Mayor, you nominate, and then you need a second.
Do I need a second?
You need a second.
I thought I needed a motion, then a second.
Nope, you're the motion.
I'm the motion. Okay, good. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Where's Mr. Mercy?
He's not here. He's on vacation.
He's on a cruise. He missed his swearing-in. Want to revote? Tell him he's on probation. Okay. Council reports. Antelope Valley Transit District, Vice Mayor Krist.
Lynn Ingle was named operator, small operator of the year for the state of California. I think that's a big deal. The ABTA is doing their stuff of us. I think tomorrow they're holding at 1:00. They're doing everything for that, so everything's moving forward. So we look forward to continuing that and being recognized. The whole agency and our administration is being recognized as the number-one agency in the state of California, so it's good. in the state of California, so it's good.
CR2, I did sit in for Mr. Mann on the sanitation district. We advised the people there to look at selling the water to our local farmers and vendors rather than sell the water to out-of-town agencies, so that was all that actually took place there. And they're negotiating the prices for them and bringing it back to Mr. Mann located it. At the AVA QMD, everything is the same, so that's it.
Anyone else? Any other council reports? What you guys been doing? No. City manager, any announcements?
Just a couple first is, we don't have any videos tonight, we just want to simply wish council and the community a Merry Christmas, this is our last meeting before then.
No Christmas video?
No, we just want to simply wish you a Merry Christmas. And also, in a serious note, as you said, 2016's always going to be stained by the murder of Sergeant Owen, but the way this community responded is how we're going to be defined, and we also thank the council for the leadership in that. And from naming the park to providing all the resources to just being there, thank you for that, that's what 2016 will be remembered for.
That's the last thing you have to say at the Christmas meeting?
Luke right now is looking for the Christmas video, which I nixed immediately, so if you can stretch a couple minutes longer, he's probably got it.
City clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, first one is Juan Leo.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council, three minutes, I'm not sure if I can get it all out. I hope this time you guys can talk back with me a little bit, so it could be a dialogue rather than just a monologue. There was an email, how do you say, a transcript of an email, Mr. Paris, did you get that with the card?
No.
No? Ms. City Attorney, did you, can I, my three minutes start over, please, because I gave her a card, I gave her an email transcript for it to be...
You have it, it's up there.
Oh, okay. Can I get an extra 15 seconds then? Do you have it?
No.
Did you, is it there?
It's a one-line email.
Can my three minutes start over, please?
Oh, was it from Derico?
Yeah, no, it's about Derico, the alleged public safety director, right? And the email from Ms. Kristi Slaton states that Mr. Derico will be at your house at 3:30, and that's September 15, 2014, right? Now, it's sad that I'm still having to talk about this two years later. I was here back in October, out of respect for the Owen family, I said that I would just come back at a later date, and I'm here, and unfortunately, it's Christmas time, but at the same time, it's just gonna keep getting delayed and delayed and delayed. So with that being said, I love everybody here and the love of Christ, but I have to get this out, otherwise it's just gonna keep going. Now, I want us to go ahead and think back to what just recently happened in Oakland. Now, there was people living in a commercial building, they were illegally outfitted for residential purposes, right? As we all know, unfortunately, 36 people died as a result, and it's been, and it's been, and it was been, how do you say, reported and well documented, that city officials knew that the building was unsafe and was illegally retrofitted. Now, Mr. Derico, you may want to deny, I don't know, it's up to you, but the email's there. You remember being at my home, don't you, back in 2014? Yes or no?
We're not...
Okay, fine, he doesn't want to answer, that's fine. Email's there, he was at my home back in 2014, September.
Mr. Derico is directed not to answer you.
That's fine. And, well, I spoke to him, not only him, but Kristi, Kristi, no, I'm sorry, Trish, DeeDee, before him, and then, for some reason, you got upset with city manager because of the hierarchy, I know my, I know the chain of command, I started with DeeDee, then Trish, then Derico, now him, now Mr., the city manager. Now, when I was reporting illegal activity at a LandCap group home, LandCap, that's the city, city license, you know what I was told about several violations? A group home being used for a commercial, a residential home being used for commercial purposes? You told the city, you already told the city that he's doing that, Deputy Jordan came to my home, he's, right, hence the email, you already told the city that he's doing that. You guys took 30 seconds of my time, they don't care and they don't want to do anything about it, is that, was that how the city, that's what Oakland did with the people, with that building out there, is that what Lancaster does here? Because I have the video, have you seen the video? I could put it up there, if you'd like.
Juan, you come here for an email that is two years old.
Mr. Mayor, I had to sell my home, people in Oakland got displaced, I got displaced, I don't want anybody else in the city of Lancaster to be displaced, do you understand it, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you. So no dialogue?
None.
No? Okay, thank you.
Wow, started out such a good night. What'd you say?
My name is Michael Evans, I'm a resident of the city of Lancaster, I'm here representing the 10,000 Fearless Movement in the Antelope Valley, and specifically, I just want to read a statement. Rex Paris, your $1,000 bounty for gang bangers convicted of a felony is unacceptable and will not be tolerated.
Why, I didn't have an...
Gang bangers is code word for young black and brown boys and girls. If you were truly concerned about putting away those who commit a felony, then why isn't your bounty for anyone who is convicted of a felony? We do not accept your bounty on our young black, brown, and boys and girls. If you are serious about reducing crime in our community, then commit that money to prevention and early intervention programs, such as the Comprehensive Violence Reduction Strategy being implemented by the 10,000 Fearless Movement in the Antelope Valley. We will not allow anyone else to target our use.
Want a dialogue? Not even a dialogue? Damn. Anybody want a dialogue?
I'll take one.
Okay, come on up. Get her name.
Good evening and Merry Christmas. My name is Robin Tarver.
Hi, Robin.
Hi, and I would love to have a dialogue. I received a Facebook post around 3 o'clock today that stated you have a $1,000 bounty for gang members. Let the record show, I do not support gang members. However, I've lived in the Antelope Valley since 1988. I think it was about four years ago that there was a, I don't know what you called it, but I drove on the east side to three different schools picking up children during the summer. I witnessed black males being pulled over on bikes, black males being pulled over walking, black males just riding in cars. The next day, the Antelope Valley Press had wrote something, and that was something you had ordered. The next thing that concerned me was...
You really think that I ordered them to do what?
Yes.
You really believe that?
Next time I come back, I will bring that article. Two years ago, at the last town meeting, when the Department of Justice came, I asked the person from the Sheriff's Department who was in charge, does this mean I will no longer see police officers pull up on the side of young black men and ask them, are they gang members, are they on probation or parole? He told me that will stop. So I'm here, hoping to have a dialogue with you, because when I seen that Facebook post today, I became very concerned as to how you're gonna implement this. And I don't know if you remember my little Jason, you helped him out a few years ago. Well, Jason has grown six feet and he's about solid 300 pounds, and I'm very concerned about him being mistaken, as well as my 30-year-old son or his 17-year-old brother as gang members.
Wait a minute, how did Jason get to 300 pounds?
Ask his mother.
All right, let me explain my thinking, and I know many people are gonna disagree with me. If I just make it as to gang members in general, it becomes too diffuse. Hopefully, in a very short period of time, I'm going to have a black grandchild, and I do not want that grandchild under the threat of gangs or the police. I think we've all made a terrible mistake in not recognizing that especially the Crips and the Bloods, what they have done to specifically the black community. As soon as we drive them out, then I'll find another gang to drive out. But remember the first gang I targeted? The first one?
What was the first one? The Section 8 homeowners, that was the first person that you targeted?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Who was the first that you targeted?
Was the Mongols. The Mongols.
No, no, you were after Section 8 before the Mongols, no, let the record show.
Wait a minute, I know who I was after and who I wasn't, okay?
Well, I was watching the city council meetings and I was hearing you was hitting your little thing on there, saying that you would go after Section 8, oh, yeah, you targeted them first.
Maybe, does it matter if they were first or second?
Not to me, but you brought it up.
Section 8 is not a gang.
Thank you, but they were treated like they were.
Mongols. Maybe, maybe the perception was created, I would agree.
I'm trying to keep the Christmas spirit, but you gotta be honest about it.
No, I am being honest, have I ever, wait a minute, the one thing you gotta admit, I am transparent. I do not hide what I'm doing for one second. And I'm telling you right now that if I could do a $1,000 bounty for Crips and Bloods who commit felonies in this town and make it dead or alive, I would, I would, all right?
But my concern is how we protect Jason?
I do not think we should spend one cent in trying to rehabilitate somebody who joins the Crips or the Bloods. We should spend billions, billions on keeping them from getting in it. But make no mistake about it.
How do we protect Jason from the sheriff?
What?
How do we protect Jason from the sheriff? If Jason wants to walk to the store at 10 o'clock at night...
He should, he should be able to.
He shouldn't, but he does.
He should be able to, but isn't that a different discussion?
No, because Jason can be racially profiled and he can be mistaken for a gang member by wearing something red.
Good point. Why did I go after them wearing red or blue? Because the science, the studies, tell us that the other kids in the neighborhood, when they see somebody wearing gang attire, it frightens them, their stress levels go up. The more their stress levels go up, the more likely they are to join a gang. You do not get, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish.
Let me just, no, I need to stop you right there, because I'm from Compton, so when I go back to Compton, I don't wear red or blue, I wear pink, purple, yellow, black, white.
It could get you killed, right?
Okay, and I'm 57 years old.
So why are you, why are you coming down on me about no red or blue?
But I haven't seen that in Lancaster, are you telling me now that I should tell Jason not to wear red or blue in Lancaster?
No, I'm saying he should not wear gang attire.
What is gang attire?
Gang attire, you know as well as I do what it is. You know as well as I do what it is. If you want your children to run out there wearing that red cap, you know you are putting them at risk. You know it, right?
You know what, I'm gonna agree with you, yes.
Then, then get...
Yes, they will be, they will be, because that's how you're gonna portray them, that's how you have profiled them, so if Jason decides to walk...
Me? That's how I profile?
Well, you're the mayor, don't take it personal, you're the mayor, okay?
So I gotta take the heat for everybody.
If Jason decides that he wants to walk next door to the Shell gas station at 10 o'clock at night and buy a soda that I don't approve of, and he has on a cap...
If he looks like he belongs to the Crips or the Bloods, he's asking for it. He is asking for it.
He's asking for it.
The first year I was here, the first, the first reward I put up was for a 13-year-old black girl that was gunned down at a party, and she was one of 24.
Thank you.
Those children have stopped dying in my city, and I don't want them to start again.
And again, I'm not supporting gang members, I just want to protect those that are being profiled.
And I will make, I will make the decisions as hard... I agree, we have to deal with that. We have, and I think the best way to deal with it is to have some education program within the sheriff's department and in the community, how to recognize the difference. You know, hip-hop kids are oftentimes designated as gang kids, and they're not.
Yes.
That really is a community interaction that needs to take place within the department and then with the community. And we also have to educate our children what to do when the police are there. You know, when I was a kid, sheriff showed up, wasn't such a big deal, but things have changed. First of all, they're running 100 miles an hour. I've taught my children, when they were younger, to go invisible, do not get in the way, do not be the problem. Yes, it's America and we're supposed to be able to say whatever we want, but when there's a police situation involved, we should recognize it is a dangerous situation, and it's getting more and more dangerous.
Well, I think that has been made clear in America, whether you respect the officer or not, your life is in danger, that is very clear.
That is not true here.
In 2016 in America.
That is not true here.
It is very clear to African-Americans and brown people, very clear, so...
I'm not, I'm not saying we don't need to work on some things, we do.
But you just said there needs to be a dialogue.
That's right.
We need to educate the Sheriff's Department and...
And the children.
And the children, you are absolutely right.
And we're trying to do that, we're trying to develop some programs to do that, and you should take part in those programs, you really should.
I have no problem with that. Thank you. I'll bring Jason, too.
Good.
Thank you.
You have a, you have a good son, no, you're not, Jason's not your mother, you're the mother. How did you let him get to be 300 pounds?
Good food.
Thank you, Robin. We'll talk some more, okay? Good. And who are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Eddie Willis, and I would first like to thank all of the members of our first responders in our community, law enforcement...
Eddie, back away from the mic just a little bit.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Thank you. Fire department, emergency medical responders, our council members who, you guys do the best job you can, and I want to thank you. I'll give you a little background on me, I served two tours in Iraq in the United States Marine Corps, came home to my community, the black community, and worked for the federal government for 12 years, I saw a lot of things I didn't like, and I currently work in radio, and I do, you know, journalistic broadcasting, so I have to look at a lot of numbers. And one of the disparities I see is blacks make up over 40% of the prison population and less than 20% of the general population. Now, I believe Hillary Clinton called us super predators. I don't consider myself or anyone I know who is a black person a super predator. So there are, you know, people who will assume, well, I think I know what's best for your people, and the reason why I'm up here today is that I ask, and I am with this gentleman and with Ms. Tarver, we are opposed, we already make up an underserved, over-profiled majority of the people, and yes, there are bad people out there who are black, and I would guess at least 80 to 85% of those bad guys are caught by our good guys. But as Ms. Tarver was saying, there is a 15% of the population that gets caught up in the wash. I purposely showed up today, I don't mean to scare anyone, I hope no one's afraid, as the mayor said, sometimes a black person can show up looking like this and boom. We lost one of the pillars of our community in Sergeant Owens, and one of the things that he did, that I also did, I coached youth football and basketball for the majority, at least 15 years, and what you run into is, you run into the people who are caught up in that prison industrial complex, who may have a husband or a father or a kid that is suffering, and the only thing that I ask tonight is, whatever legislation is going to be passed in honor of Sergeant Owens, certain words be taken... in honor of Sergeant Owens, certain words be taken out, like Crips and Bloods, because that's targeting a specific group of people. Yes, there are some bad black people out there who are Crips and Bloods. There are also Latin gangs, there are also Aryan Nation gangs. If you are going to paint that broad brush and get all the bad guys, stop putting the spotlight on people who are already suffering. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, we have a difference of opinion. We have a difference of opinion. To me, who do you think is the victim of the Crips and the Bloods?
Good people, good citizens who go to work every day and take care of their families for a living. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, we all suffer through a broken system. Do you agree that those numbers are skewed, that over 40% of the prison population looks like me? Is anyone comfortable with that number?
No.
I didn't think so. No one's comfortable with that.
First of all, I don't think it's accurate. I don't think it's accurate. Well, it's not accurate to the sense that you're not looking at it based upon the number of people represented. It's worse than that. It's worse than that. Isn't any question about that? Isn't any question that it is dangerous to be black and male in America? There just isn't. And it starts really early. And I'm gonna have one of those children as a grandchild. So I get it. I really do. I also get that, right now, in this city, our children, black children, very few white children are being affected by the Crips and Bloods, or being targeted by them. Very few.
Absolutely.
And I don't understand why the black community isn't endorsing this.
I tried to explain, it's the wording. Do you know the last time bounty was used in this country? It was a couple of hundred years ago, and the majority of the people who had bounties on them were runaway slaves. So, yes, please do something about the problem, but just to say, okay, the Crips and Bloods, bounty, certain words are triggers for my people.
If I make it general, if I generalize it, right? My goal is that the members of the individual gangs get it that it ain't safe in Lancaster to be in that gang. That's the message I want to give. And does it cause other people to feel bad? I get it, it does. I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it, given the horrors that some members of those gangs bring to our community. But remember, it was the Mongols that were the... I ended up having security for six months. The sheriff's department, they were taking bets I wasn't gonna live six months for targeting them.
Say?
I don't care what race the gang is, what I care about is who is harming our community. And I don't understand why we're not sitting down saying, look, this month, it's the Bloods. If you're a Blood in Lancaster, we're gonna do whatever we can to eliminate you from our borders. Once that's happened, then let's go after the Bloods. Once that's happened, what's the next biggest gang? But right now, the two biggest gangs, because we took Lanc... What was it, Lancus? The first one? Lancus? Lancus was the biggest one we had. We arrested 200 of them one day, and there wasn't a black person in it. Not a black person in it. But they were the biggest danger at that time. But I want to quit screwing around. I don't care whose feelings I hurt. They get in that gang, I do not want to rehabilitate them, I want to remove them. And the sooner the rest of the entire neighborhoods start agreeing with that, the sooner we'll be done with them. Because we really are on our own up here. Nobody's gonna come riding to the rescue. I'm sorry if people think that that makes me a racist or a profiler. You know, I know you don't. I know, but there's some people behind you who absolutely think I'm a racist. No, it's not Erica. Erica is my closest friend and assistant.
You have a tough job, Mr. Mayor. And again, whenever this proposal is written up, again, by all means, target those that need to be targeted, but the wording... I mean, like I said, I do journalistic reporting, so I have to be...
So what word should I use instead of bounty that will also cause them to be very uncomfortable in Lancaster? I mean, I'm not using the word to make them feel good.
Well, again, it's not the bad guys.
But I get the association. I get the association. I'm willing to work with you. You know, understand, this is not the city council's money, this is my personal money to drive these gangs out of our neighborhood. You know, how many kids that from the... Jason came out of the mock trial program, didn't he?
No.
Where did I meet Jason?
In your office, he was having an issue with school, and he just...
Just showed up?
No.
Whatever, okay. Thank you. All of those kids, they were victims of those gangs, one way or the other. You know, of staying away from them, trying to be sucked in by them. So let's just get rid of them. And we can do it, neighborhood by neighborhood. And if it means we gotta come up with another word, you gotta come up with the word.
I have the answers. I would just suggest that we, like you said, collectively come up with the right wording where people don't feel targeted, and...
No, 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 no. We are targeting the Crips and the Bloods.
Right.
Make no mistake about that. We are targeting them.
Crips, Bloods, Latin gangs, everybody.
If I target all the gangs, nothing gets done.
I mean, in the wording. We're targeting all the gangs, and then whatever briefing you say go on behind closed doors with officers, we don't need to be privy to that. You know, every day when these officers go out, they're briefed, so...
No, it has nothing to do with them. The $1,000 is to the neighborhoods. You know, if you know somebody that's a Crip or Blood, lives in Lancaster, has committed a felony, you turn him in and he gets convicted, you get $1,000.
Should be their civil duty, anyway.
Should be. Should be.
But the 15% that'll be caught up in the...
You know, I'd like to say there wouldn't be, but you and I both know there will be. And I think, whose fault is that? We cannot tolerate these gangs. It doesn't matter, once they're in, they're the enemy. And trust me, that $1,000 reward is the tip of the iceberg of what we're doing. Law enforcement's changing after Sergeant Owens died. And as far as gang members, all gang members in this city, six months from now, this is not gonna be the place to live.
I pray, I pray it works. Thank you.
I want the help.
I'll do my best, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar, how are you?
Excellent, thank you.
You lost weight.
I did, quite a bit. Thank you, counsel. I actually came here to speak tonight about the marijuana issue, but hearing the public comments, I couldn't just kind of sit down. I applaud the efforts of law enforcement. We all know that the loss of one of our deputies felt by the entire community. One of the concerns that I have as a person who grew up here in the city of Lancaster, on the east side of town, on H12, between I and 10th Street West, where there was gang recruitment, where there was issues, I went to Mariposa Elementary, went to Pirate Middle School. I remember that many of my classmates had issues, where they were being pressured by their older siblings, who were sometimes not actual bona fide gang members, but who would at least play the role. I don't know if the council, the public, or you, Mr. Mayor, was aware of the audit that was done earlier this year about the California gang database. They found that 24 people under the age of one were in the database, first admitting to being gang members. My concern as someone in the Latino community, someone who works closely with immigrant communities, who face absolutely catastrophic consequences from being labeled gang members incorrectly, including legal permanent residents, who are made inadmissible to the country, who cannot apply for citizenship if they have an association with a gang. This database is compiled by our law enforcement. If our law enforcement err to the point where they are listing infants as confessed gang members, I am very worried that in our community, we're going to have people accused of being gang members who will get caught up in this. So as we go forward, I hope, Mr. Mayor, that you will give special consideration to the criteria that is used, to who we identify as gang members, and to make sure that the 60% of the people in that database who are Latino, the 20% of the people in the database who are black, the infants on that database who may be part of our community, that they're not caught up in this, and that we're not hurting communities who are already hurt the most by gang violence, by systemic poverty, and by our unfortunately failed carceral system. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone here today. My name is Jacob Johnson, and serve in various capacities in our community. I pastor the oldest predominantly African-American church in the valley, the Grand Valley Church, that's on the corner of 20th West and Lancaster Boulevard. It's a fitting day, if you sense the shivering in my voice. Today is the four-year anniversary of the passing of my predecessor, Pastor Forte. I serve as a vice president of NAACP, served with the Clergy Alliance Council here, and wanted to talk and just urge the council, Mr. Mayor, we've met a couple of times in passing, and other members of the council. I want to applaud our council, and particularly you, Mr. Mayor, for some of the things that you've done. I became a resident here December 3, 2010, when I work with law enforcement, been serving and trying to get to help bridge some of the gaps that I think, at the heart of your policy, with regard to the $1,000 and the gang members, think at the heart of what you're trying to do is accurate, being safe in our community. But I do want to say, I think maybe one reason why you cannot understand why African-Americans feel strongly about such piece of legislation is because, with all due respect, you're not black. I know. And with the things that are going on in our country, when Sergeant Owens was shot down, that was terrible. I think all of us would agree that was terrible. I was present at his service, it was wonderful. I do think there were some things said at that service that were out of order, because it took away from what the family was trying to say, and that they love the Lord, he loved the Lord, and they hope that we at all would love the Lord. But I said to some officers, and I would say here, that that was a tragic loss, and given what's going on in the country, even though we live in a small community here, what's going on around the country impacts all of our minds. I have a 15-year-old son, and he goes to Periclee High School. He's afforded some things that maybe some families are not. But I'm concerned about him walking from school, being at school, those types of things. And this bounty, or whatever we want to call it, it resonates in our spirits because of the buzzwords and words that go around. And I would urge the council and yourself to really maybe reconsider how you go about doing it. I can't tell you how to do it, you all are the legislators, that's why you're elected to do what you do. But I think you should hear our concern.
I'm listening, I really am.
The wording, and it just, there's something for us that's deep-seated, and what we would wave the flag on and say, that would be wrong. And maybe, we can't understand all of what it is that you're trying to do, but I think it's clear to many of us that the wording is awakening within some of us some deep concern.
So how about if we called it a reward?
Well...
And the other thing, quite frankly, what, you know, to be honest with you, is what occurred. I just wanted to go after the Bloods, because it was a Blood that fired the gun.
Right.
And people were telling me, don't do that, you know, because then you become a bigger target. That's why I threw in the Crips, or it could have been the other way around, I forget which it was. Not, and until people started calling me, actually, where Erica go? She was the one who said, what are you doing? That I didn't think it would do that. I'm fine with just taking it back and doing the Bloods, and when we get rid of them, we'll go after the Crips. That might have a different... I don't know, what do you think?
I perceived, and being someone who just hears things and reads things, I perceived, when I read the article and heard it, that it was a direct result of what occurred with Sergeant Owens, and being aware of some of the things. As a leader myself, of people, I have found, in my short period of time, that being reactionary to certain things and how we respond to them can be detrimental to the... how it appears to other people, and our impact to lead a whole body. And I think maybe that's what's being felt. I think gangs in general are a problem, regardless of what their name is, and crime doesn't really have a color.
When you target all of them, it has very little impact. What the studies tell us is, if you target one at a time, you can remove them, at least geographically. What I'm more interested in is, how do we get the community to say, you join that gang, you are not of us? You know?
Well, that's a question, I think, that hasn't been researched. And I think maybe going in the community, and I think specifically, the portion of the community that you're trying to impact with this type of legislation, and I think we could all argue that would be the African-American community, and having that dialogue with us as to how we can push that forward, and...
You've been in some of those discussions.
Actually, I've not.
That's right, okay. You know, we have that group, that working group we put together. We all have the same goal, we all have the same idea, but very few people are willing to put up with this, to take the anger of the community when you do make... You follow me?
Well, as a leader, you know as well as I know, that's some of the stuff you have to live with.
No, I agree.
But I would say this, too. What I have observed in our community, in the six full years I've been here, is everybody really does not feel welcome at the table. But then there are also ways to keep people away from the table who really need to be at the table. So as someone who's involved in the community and those kinds of things, I have never received a call, and been asked by the council or yourself or anyone to come to a meeting and such to dialogue about it. And there are, I think we all know there are leaders in the community, and then there are leaders in the community. And it doesn't matter, I think, who you talk to, and a lot of the groups in our community seem to be the same people.
I agree with that.
And that's a big problem, especially when we're looking at something that... And I don't disagree that something needs to be done, but I think when there are people who think alike in the room all the time, it really is impossible to represent the people who you're really representing when they're not at the table. Now, how do you get them there? I think through invitation, and really, my faith tells me to go into the world. And I just don't think you can effectively reach people by not going to them. And so, unfortunately, I hang on where our church locates. As I look at the council, I think only one member of the council has been to our church. And you can't miss our church, because we sit right on the corner. I think Mr. Chris, you go to church right around the corner from ours. Pastor Chris Johnson and I went to the same seminary, we're friends. But you can't miss our church.
I've been to your church.
Prior to my...
Prior to you.
Six years times 365 days is a long time. And like I told some of them, Lackey and others, you don't need an invitation to come, you just have to show up, it's an open place. And I would, I think, starting there, because I think our sheriff, Sergeant Dawson, can tell you, they've made a big step in just coming and visiting. And we've been able to make a lot of strides in that area because of just holding hands and being together. So I think there are those of us who would like to come to the table, that may mean that some others are not at the table.
There's the rub.
In our community, to be honest, in the African-American community, the leadership in the community is shifting. And I think it's high time for people making decisions to figure that out.
You know, the white community, it's shifting too.
But we're really not addressing that community.
Me and Marvin are on our way out.
Yeah, but we're not addressing that community. And to be honest, for too long, I think it's been like that. And as public servants...
Too long it's been like what?
That we haven't really been reached out to as a whole. And to, as public servants, it's your job, it's your job to find us citizens, not us citizens' job to find you because you represent us.
I would disagree.
Well, that's all right.
And let me tell you my reasoning on that is, when I have to recruit people to get on commissions and to get on the council and things of that nature, I have been disappointed because that's not where their heart is. The, I mean, you have to recognize that this city is vastly different than it was eight years ago, and the people at the table running things they're interested in is remarkably different than it used to be. I mean, you just have to get that. And still, my frustration is, is there's not people wanting to get involved. And every time I've recruited, I've been disappointed. The, remember that Section 8 committee we had?
Absolutely.
There were two seats on it, empty, that I couldn't fill. But everybody was screaming about what they were doing. Now, I get how that works, but you got to recognize too that if people don't want to be involved, when the doors are open to them, what do you get? You just waste energy.
I think that's a valid point to a degree, and I think we're going to agree to disagree on some things.
Sure, sure. Believe me, I don't want somebody else who's going to agree with me.
One thing that sent a flag up for me, so I don't know you, I'm very careful about calling someone racist because I think that's very serious. I remember a couple of years ago...
Actually, you know, let's talk about that.
Well, no, no.
We use it as a noun. It's a verb.
I want to bring up a point as to why I said that.
Okay.
I remember an election maybe a couple of years ago, Jonathan Irvin was running for office, and there was a mailer that came to my house, I think using the gangbanger term.
Sure, I sent that.
That was incredibly, to a person who doesn't know you, but who you represent, I live in Lancaster, El Antonia, incredibly injurious to me. If for any other reason. I do know that Bishop Hearns was there at that march, and I was scheduled to be there, but my plane got in late. I know we weren't running for office, but that did strike me a little bit as something odd. I do know that some people had met with you and you had apologized for it.
No, 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 no. I didn't apologize for that.
Okay. Well, that's what I was told.
I do not want Jonathan Irvin anywhere near this council. I appointed him to the Planning Commission, was getting ready to run him for the council, when the real Jonathan Irvin became clear.
That's fine, but I'm just sharing my perception. And one thing I've learned is you can never take away another person's reality.
Sure.
And so for me, as an African-American who believes in social justice, passes the church, and is just a human being, that was kind of like, whoa. And it shocked me. Now, I don't know your relationship...
I had to really look for a picture that didn't have my friends in it.
I don't, I don't know, but you can hear what I'm saying. Because we're talking about race, and we're talking about the issue. And for me, there's, there are times to be jovial, and I think this is one that's really serious.
Okay.
But for me, as a concerned citizen, it rocked me a little. Because I think we all know that in America, particularly in this season that we're living in, those words are words that are testy. And I wish I could say, I don't care whose feelings I hurt, but I do care.
I get that. I don't, but I get that you, boy, that's important.
And I would, I would imagine, I believe you're Christian.
Yes, of course.
That you do care. That's a many thing in our country. We know that. But I think that you care too. And so I think you do care if you hurt people's feelings. But a part of our job is we hurt people's feelings and making some of the decisions we make.
Fair enough, fair enough.
But in doing so, you know, Christian to Christian, in the multitude of council, and I think that's really the spirit of what I'm saying, is maybe dialoguing with some of us who are really in the community, outside of the group that is currently dialogued with, may even help you bridge the gap and get down what you're trying to do. And maybe even something like this, even if you keep the language the same or change a couple of words, putting money also into resources that will help rehab some of those felons or some of those who are coming out. And I understand our...
Stop, stop, stop. I want to be clear on this. Billions have been spent trying to take people out of the gangs.
But that wasn't your money.
Let me finish. And where did it get us? What we have now discovered is that if you took one-tenth of that money and put it into the neighborhoods before they join the gangs, if you put it into the kids before they get in the gangs...
Early childhood education.
You can accomplish a great deal.
So is there, let me ask you this, are you...
But once they're in, as far as I'm concerned, they're the enemy.
Definitely aware, well, I don't know about the enemy, but definitely, definitely aware of statistics and understanding that. Totally get it. But I would also urge in checking the language and dialoguing more, that then the same thing would occur, whether it be through the city, or your law firm, or your personal money, that finding a way to do more in early childhood education, doing more, and I'm aware of some things in our community, but the African-American community as a whole is really, we might think that we know about stuff because we put it on Facebook, or we told, you know, a group of people. But Mr. Mayor, I can assure you that the people who you entrust to take information to our community, they are not doing what you expect them to do.
So what would you prefer I do? Or what should I do in addition?
I would change the group around you. But I can assure you that they are not, and I don't, I don't, I do, I do not know...
You're talking about my friends, you know?
Well, but I've got friends who I've had to sit aside and say, listen, I can't do what needs to be done to take the people that I lead.
I'm not saying I'm not willing to bring more people in or to go to other people. What I am saying is I am loyal to my friends, and I'm not kicking anybody out.
I'm loyal to my friends too, but my friends also understand that I've got a job to do.
I agree, we need more voices that disagree.
Yeah, yeah.
I would prefer that I had people that would tell me this two months ago, where we could have the discussion. You know, I get that. So let's figure out a plan to do.
I will tell you that, though, that the people, whoever you have assigned to our community...
I don't have anybody assigned to the community, come on.
Is not, or those you communicate with, or, I'm sure that when you're seeking to reach the African-American community, there's got to be some black people you talk to. And I would hope that you're not ambiguously doing stuff for our community, which I've heard you speak of by not talking to any of us. So whoever it is that you dialogue with to reach our community...
Hey, let's be realistic. I've got the most integrated office in the valley.
Sir?
I've got the most integrated office in the valley. I've got the most integrated commissions that this valley has ever seen. I am not afraid to dialogue with anyone. And anybody who seems to think that I'm keeping people out, that's just not accurate.
Mr. Mayor, I did not say you were keeping people out.
Okay, so now I'm asking you, what do you, when are you going to come in?
What I said was, some of the people around you, as I mentioned, if you, I'm sure, because you represent a diversity of people, I would imagine that's why the people around you are diverse. But those people who are diverse or fit that category, whatever way we want to say it, they are not speaking to the people, let's say, that look like them.
I get it.
And the manner in which they need to. And for you to be successful, I want you to be successful, and for our city to prosper, those people either are going to have to step their game up, or you're going to have to find a way to work around them for the overall success of our community. So I would hope that you at least, that you hear that.
What we're really talking about is promoting people into the political arena, right?
No, I don't think it necessarily needs to be political. I think that there...
If you want to have a voice, you have to have some power at the table. That really is the way the world works.
Influence. I don't think you have to have an office, a political office, to be powerful. And we could agree to disagree on that. And I don't want to, you know, take up people's time.
Hopefully, these commissions we put together to improve the well-being of the neighborhoods, or to deal with criminal justice, are actually doing that. And in order to have influence in those commissions, it's probably a good idea to have a voice on the commission. And what I'm saying is I'm more than open to that. This is not, I do not play in-out. I do not kick people out of the lifeboat. But there has to be a genuine interest of wanting to get involved and improve the well-being of those around us. I'm not interested in dealing with people that just bitch, you know? I mean, I want to see people that improve the well-being. And I'm not accusing you of that. I'm just saying that that seems to be what the...
I've just never been in a, I've never, I've never, I'm not saying you're disrespecting me by using such language, but I am saying that...
I'm sorry if I did. I mean...
Learning how to be, learning how to be candid. I was told this, and then I'll sit down, because I think we're all kind of tired. I just got back from a conference in Nashville, and senior pastor, he's 84 years old. He said to a bunch of preachers, he said, it's okay for us to be open and share things with people. But he said, you don't have to unzip all the way.
I stand corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.
Honorable mayor.
I don't see a card.
Counselor, no, there is no card, mayor. If you want me to write one, I'll go in. If the time is up, I'll certainly respect that. My name is Javier Flores. I was past president of Antelope Valley League of United Latin American Citizens. I'm speaking as a representative of that organization right now. Mayor, you're well aware that I'm a letter writer on several occasions. I've criticized you. On other occasions, I've commended you and commended this body.
There is a difference between castigate and criticize.
Okay. I think I've tried to be fair, and I've tried not to, because this is a principle of mine, I don't criticize the person, I criticize the action. And that's what I've always done in all of my letters, including the ones where I've been critical of you. But I've also commended the actions of this body and some of your actions as well. Having said that, on several occasions, and as a representative of LULAC, we've gone ahead and sent you and also the mayor of Palmdale, reports and studies that relate to community and police relations. And in those emails, we recommended that we sit down and have a dialogue, starting from the premise that's being put forward by those reports. Now, if I were to bring all those reports and define them with two words, I would say implicit bias is the two words that we need to discuss. All those reports speak to that issue in one form or another. And we know that right now there's an oversight committee that's taking a look at the sheriff's department to make sure that they abide by the 200 or so provisions that they hammered out in some kind of agreement and deal with DOJ and the sheriff's department. In speaking to those individuals, because they've gone throughout the community to try to hear what we have to say, they were very keen in telling us that implicit bias is something they agree with, needs to be dealt with. Sheriff's need to be trained about it, but so do our city officials, so do community folk. Mayor, you need to know something about me. I believe that there's bias in the sheriff's department, but I believe that that bias is more pervasive than just in the sheriff's. I believe that we as citizens of the United States all share that bias. We all have it. We're taught to be biased, and we need to figure out how to deal with it. Now, it's the sheriff's department and the way they deal with our communities, communities of color, that's of particular interest. But I think as we move forward and try to deal with that, we need to deal with our own bias. Mayor, I'd just like to end by saying this. The proposal in those emails was to not have you incorporate us into your bodies, but instead you come to our events, support those events, sanction them as a city, and then come to them so that we can continue this dialogue. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk about this, but we need to sit down and talk about it in the community, not in this venue. And we need to talk about them as community members, not as members of an august body like your planning commission or your other commissions. No. There's other, other folk that need to be brought into the fray, but you're not the one that needs to invite them all. You should allow community organizations to invite them and be a part of this dialogue. But agree that the premise needs to be something like implicit bias and how we're going to deal with it. And in that, we could discuss how we see your action on bounty as supporting implicit bias, as being a part and parcel of that whole scheme.
I get it. I don't disagree with you. To me, though, it's a profit-loss. Is it worth it? Is the impact on the gangs in the neighborhoods worth it? It may not be. But at the end of the day, that's how I'll decide it. I mean, I don't need anybody's concurrence. Okay?
We get that.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Aria Paccacci. I'm a resident of the Antelope Valley, student at ABC, and community organizer for the Antelope Valley Green Party and related causes. The United States has 4.4% of the world's population, but 22% of inmates. Time Magazine reports 39% of prisoners should not be in prison. Unfortunately, the city of Lancaster is leading the charge in perpetuating this broken system of mass incarceration. Lancaster spends more money on putting people in jail than any other area in LA County. From 2005 to 2015, Lancaster put twice as many people in jail than Santa Clarita, a city with a similar population. From those same years, Lancaster put twice as many people in jail than Long Beach, even though Long Beach has a population three times the size. Mr. Rex Paris, your proposal for a $1,000 bounty for information that would lead to the felony conviction of so-called gangbangers is based on a narrative which is out of touch with the reality of the source of violence in our community. Gangbanger is a racist term which serves to demonize black and brown people. It is an unfortunate reality that black and Latino youth are disproportionately targeted, scrutinized, and will end up in jail for minor offenses while white people are generally forgiven. If we are concerned about addressing violence, we must address the dominant source of violence in the city of Lancaster, which is the ripping apart of families and destruction of lives through this system of over-incarceration. If we are concerned about crime, we have to address the systemic-ish causes of crime. We have to create better job opportunities, better public transportation, and better services, excuse me, better services for people in need of housing, healthcare, and mental healthcare. Putting more people of color in cages is not the solution. I condemn your bounty proposal. It is morally wrong, racist, and will contribute to greater suffering and greater hardship. Thank you.
Why is it you didn't mention that we took unemployment from 21% to 5% and anticipate bringing it to 3% in a year and a half? You know, it's not like it's all negative here. It is a, it is a effort that I think hits all of the elements of it. Make no mistake, you're a Crip, you're a Blood, you're in Lancaster, you're a target, as long as I sit in this seat. Okay, who else do we have? Lawrence Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My interest tonight is, I can't help but be affected by the people who came ahead of me on their... me on their interests too, but specifically because it affects it. But mine is the abusive and illegal treatment of certain individuals at Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park.
Is this the one we've been dealing with?
I sure hope so, because I was going to suggest to the city attorney, and you please take a closer look at how these people are abusing...
I want them in jail.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, such a story. Oh, this is a whole new light on this, Mayor.
What?
It was gonna be my suggestion, if I could help, some more inclusive or scrutinizing, because this will send a message to the other ones who are suffering even more, but these people are out of control, you know, and it's taken on a race agenda.
Can we leave that one alone?
Okay.
And just recognize that you cannot abuse families in Lancaster without... Wait a minute, I gotta watch my language.
Okay. I'll watch mine, too. But my, I hear what you're saying. My mind was that there were certain individuals who were being targeted more than others, white, brown, red, everybody's going through that.
I think there's clearly, within some corporate interest in the Antelope Valley, a disregard that is greater for people of color than people who are Caucasians. And I think it's probably because of a perception that you're less likely to be listened to. That's a misconception, but I think that does exist. So tell me what's going on.
We have been in contact with certain residents, one of whom I see right there, of the Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park, and have been working with them on some of these issues. I was not aware that there was anything new of late. Mr. D'Arcy has been working with them as well, and perhaps I'm not as up to date as I would hope to be.
Yes, as of this moment, there's been lawsuits filed by some of the folks that live there. They have a legal representative now that I've been dealing with and made contact. They have a new manager. There was an issue, and why it was held back for a period of time because there was a potential criminal issue as related to the former management. So basically, what was brought forward was, Peep and I could just, in general, people were paying rent to a manager who was not passing those funds on to the property owner.
Well, is that manager in jail?
Pardon me?
Is he in jail?
Not yet, but it's an ongoing investigation. And again, based on any actions we take place as far as with the management now, is more compliance issues, and maybe education as far as what the law is as it pertains to mobile home parks here in California versus where they're from. And as far as the targeting of selective enforcement is an issue. Okay, we're also had contact with the security provider, issues related to car towing, there's all kinds of things going on. Initially, the context of this was a potential mediation, but in light of the fact that there's a potential criminal action, that's not appropriate. We don't want to mitigate any potential criminal action that could take place.
Specifically, what can I do for you?
That was my main focus, Mr. Mayor, was to engage you, have you to please engage the city attorney's office and whoever is responsible for taking action against these individuals. And my question is, once it's been demonstrated that a line's been crossed or the law's been broken, will there be prosecution in the future for these individuals?
There damn well should be, and there damn well better be. Okay? I'm, I'm... When I was a child, they turned the water off on my mother's home because she couldn't pay the rent, and we lived without water for three months. Imagine what that house looked like and smelled like and what we lived in. Okay?
Got you.
This personally pisses me off, and we've been dealing with it now for a year.
Yes, we have. Yes.
Yeah, when they...
This year.
Can we have a target date when that mobile home park is complying with the law and 100%?
Yes, we will, we will get one. I do not have it right now. I don't want to impede the criminal efforts. I want to make sure that that is handled appropriately and we don't interfere in any way with the criminal prosecution, because I think that's very important.
I get it. Okay, I think what they want us to do is step back, give the police a little more time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your concern. Thank you for your interest, and I think the residents will be overwhelmed with happiness to find out something at this level, it's been addressed at this level. And you personally have a concern about it, because there's a disconnect, you know?
I get it. My concern is, is that I don't seem to be having a very influential effect.
On?
This problem.
Okay.
I mean, I'm feeling impotent, you know? I mean...
What would you say it would take for you to be more effective, Mayor?
I need these people in prison. Fair enough. You can't, you can't abuse children in this city and walk.
That's exactly what's happening. Yeah.
All right?
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Robert Starkey? Okay, we've got to speed this up. I've kept this council here since 5 o'clock. Marvin hasn't even said anything bad to me yet. So we're back to the three-minute rule. All right?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. D'Arcy. He's been a great help. I also reside at Lancaster Estates. My question would be concerning City Ordinance Number 927, which would govern the rent stabilization of mobile home parks. Without all the information that they require to give the city every year and quarterly, they are not able to actually demand or even accept rents from residents of the parks. In addition...
I will admit, I do not have Ordinance 927 committed to amendment.
Okay, let's find out.
Okay. In addition, they also are to pay, and the city is to request the state operating fees and information that the city is supposed to forward to the state. Without that, they can't legally operate in the state, and I would like that to be looked at.
But wait a minute, we want to be clear here. It'd be very easy for us to go and put a fence around it and kick all the tenants out. We're dancing on a head of a pin here and making it happen so that people don't get displaced.
I understand that part, and I think City Ordinance Number 927 would be more apt to look at, because that would govern just the city, their ordinance, and without them following that, they could not demand or accept rent. It says right in the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all I would like to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Ford?
Oh, she had to leave.
Okay, Kimberly Clarkson?
Douglas Adams wrote this book called The Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy. You may be familiar with it. Three Things You Need When You're Out in the Middle of Space. You need a towel. You need The Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy, which this is not. This is the Mobile Home Park Residency Law Book. It won't help you out there. And then you also need one more thing, a nice big button that says, "Don't Panic." I'm a registered nurse. In the four years I've been at Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park, I have panicked multiple times, most recently when Code Number 798.26 was abused by the managers. Three times in less than 48 hours, managers, without contacting me, came to my door, pounded on the door and the window, telling me I absolutely had to open up my backyard because they had to come in and look at a gas meter. According to 798.26, that is not a reasonable manner or at a reasonable time. They completely destroyed my, quote, "quiet enjoyment," which is part of 798.26. They've done this in the past. As you know, the kind of selective enforcement that's been talked about is rampant, and I feel like I'm in another galaxy without my Hitchhiker's Guide, trying to live there at this point. I know that Mr. D'Arcy and Ms. Allison Burns is helping us, and I so much appreciate your words, Mr. Mayor, unless and until Senator Connie Leva from San Bernardino can allow the Department of Consumer Affairs to allow an absolutely not grandfather-in-manager so that they have to be licensed the way a registered nurse, an attorney, a real estate agent is, so that the Department of Consumer Affairs can oversee what these managers are doing. Remember, the state of California is now going to allow us as taxpayers to provide legal services to non-legal people in our state. We have no say about it. These are all civil codes. No civil court's going to give me an attorney to defend myself. I have two choices: small claims court with an award of $2,500 if I'm lucky, or a civil lawsuit, which takes years and gets me absolutely nowhere. That's how we can defend ourselves. My husband's an attorney. We are taking action, but I'm speaking for all the others who come to me crying because they can't. Let me just finish by saying this. Dante Alighieri wrote a book called The Inferno. Well, it was called The Divine Comedy. "In the inferno, across the vestibule to the entrance of the first circle of hell are the words that should be written above our mobile home park." Those words are, quote, "Abandon all hope, ye who enter here," unquote. We are desperate for help. Thank you very much.
David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I want to start by saying that, I like you, Mayor, I don't disagree with any of the concerns that were raised here, and I don't want to invalidate anyone's concerns. I wish everyone understood how difficult it is to run a city and how sometimes things are beyond our means to control despite our best efforts. Now, I know one thing about this city. I love this city because the people that serve on the council and the commissions and the staff are totally dedicated to making this city the best place it can be, and we will continue to do that. Mayor, I understand your acknowledgement that people should come out and participate. Tomorrow morning in this chamber, there will be a criminal justice meeting where you can air your concerns and get involved and get to know the people that are the human beings that are so often looked down on and judged. You know, we're all judged. We all have implicit bias, but there's only one thing that fixes that, and that's an open heart to love each other. And I see that demonstrated in this city all the time. For anybody who wonders about me, I ran for mayor four times against this man because I think I'd be a better mayor. I disagree with him on some things, but I am very satisfied that he is the mayor of this city. He or I, that's who I think should be the mayor. He comes off gruff, but he has a good heart. I love that man, and why I don't know, but it's the size of his heart, I think, that does it. So here we are, things are going, you know, look at the world. The world is in turmoil. It gets rougher every day, and yet this city makes strides forward. So to everybody that feels disenfranchised, I say, "Come out, participate, talk to all these lovely people that make this city a great place to live." I love living here. I am proud to be a resident of Lancaster. And again, I don't disagree, I don't agree with everything that goes on, but I cannot disagree with the commitment of the Planning Commission, the Criminal Justice Commission, this council, and this mayor. I love this city. Merry Christmas. God bless you all, and let's all learn to live together and love each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a closed session? Any way we can blow it off to the next meeting? The IBW's Christmas party. We gotta go.
I am, sir.
Okay. All right, the City Council. Oh, any comments from the City Council?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
The City Council will now move to closed session to discuss Closed Session Items 1 through 13. Thank you, folks.
We're reconvened. City Attorney.
In closed session, the council took up Items 11 and 12 and gave direction to the city attorney. No further reportable action. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. The City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January 10th at 2017 at 5:00 p.m. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home after I go to something else.